All right. Good evening, and thank you for viewing the March 20th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. And we'll start with the land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning "over the woods or amongst the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in the dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. If you would like, please join me for the salute, for the flag. Will the city clerk please call roll call?
Mayor Matthews?
Here.
Vice Mayor Stillman?
Present.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
All present.
If you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you are here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. If you are logged into Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on. If you are on the phone, press *9 on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial *6 on your phone. For each item, we will be taking in-person public comment first and then move to online comments. We will not be going back and forth, so if you are wanting to comment, please line up at the podium or raise your electronic hand as soon as public comment is requested on that item. We will now go to ceremonial matters. The first is a proclamation recognizing Two-Spirit Day appreciation and celebration. And I'm going to read this with the help of Stacy's reading glasses. Two-Spirit Day of Appreciation and Celebration on March 19th, 2024. Whereas originating from indigenous communities of Turtle Island, the concept of Two-Spirit denotes a unique cultural identity that includes various sexual and gender expressions intersecting with indigenous LGBTQ plus identities and people who hold diverse culturally significant roles in their respective communities. And whereas the term Two-Spirit was first articulated at the Third Annual Intertribal Native American First Nations Gay and Lesbian Conference in Winnipeg in 1990 as an umbrella term and organizing tool to center the diversity of gender identities and sexual expressions within indigenous communities that have rich histories predating European colonialism. And whereas Two-Spirit Day of Appreciation and Celebration is already recognized in communities across Canada, including the city of Vancouver, the province of British Columbia, the city of Saskatoon, and by many indigenous Two-Spirit and non-indigenous community-based organizations across Canada occurring annually on the spring equinox, symbolizing harmonious balance between length of day and night and moving from a time of dormancy to a season of newness, growth, light. And whereas because of community activism, determined advocacy, resilience, and talent, Two-Spirit people continue to reclaim and tear down systemic barriers set up to exclude them and serve as community, cultural, and educational leaders. And whereas there are nine federally recognized tribal nations, along with a large community of indigenous people from around the nation and around the world within Humboldt County, including those who recognize Two-Spirit people within their culture and language, such as the Wiat tribe's turn of solat lak or of gobe, which means "both together." And whereas the city of Arcata celebrates the beauty and resilience of Two-Spirit people today and throughout history, recognizing that Two-Spirit people have rich traditions of contributing in myriad ways to the betterment of our society, often working at the forefront of social justice activism and human rights. And whereas in Arcata, we believe and reaffirm the inherent value of each resident of our community, including our Two-Spirit communities, individuals, and families without exception. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Arcata hereby declares Tuesday, March 19th, 2024, as Two-Spirit Day of Appreciation and Celebration and encourages all residents to learn about Two-Spirit traditions and communities today. Summon the courage to stand up and speak out to interrupt racism, sexism, homophobia, and transphobia when it occurs, and listen with patience and empathy to create an environment for learning and understanding each other regardless of what we look like, where we come from, or who we love. This is dated March 20th, 2024, signed by me, Meredith Matthews. And accepting this to world is Andy, a member of the Two-Spirit community.
My pronouns are they/them, and I'm of the Wiat tribe. I'm also a member of the queer community and identify as a Two-Spirit person. I'm happy to be here on Wiat land to witness the progress we are making, not only here in California, but all across Turtle Island. Thank you to Queer Humboldt for granting me this opportunity, and thank you for the Arcata City Council for opening your hearts and minds to the celebration of Two-Spirit folks in Humboldt County and beyond. The term Two-Spirit originates from an indigenous lesbian and gay gathering in 1990 and has gained popularity to distinguish native members of the LGBT community, but we as a people have been here since the dawn of time. Our spirits have allowed us to combine men and women's activities and to commune with the Creator in the spirits in our own unique way. We are not a new phenomenon, like some believe. Two-Spirit Day is the beautiful culmination of years of advocacy from Two-Spirit activists north of the Medicine Line in Canada, the city of Vancouver, Canada, all of British Columbia, and various government entities in Canada have been recognizing this day over the years, but is now in the past weeks that our nation, the United States, has begun to acknowledge the day. I am proud to stand with our northern siblings and this movement. This proclamation moves our history forward and honors all Two-Spirit and queer ancestors who came before us and the generations who will be here after us. Thank you and good evening.
Ya'ate, my name is Maxi Atathlin Lopez. I am in the Zedan, Two-Spirit, Cherakawa Apache. My pronouns are they/he for now. Ahia'hi to the Wiat, Yirac, Hoopa, Upriver and Downriver Peoples for their active resistance to the ongoing cultural genocide of indigenous people in this country, for taking me in and helping me understand what it means to be a good ancestor since I first came here fall 2013. Ahia'hi to the city of Arcata for this beautiful display of recognition of Two-Spirited people on this day. Being Two-Spirited to me means is an understanding that I carry a legacy of community nurturing and active resistance to colonization. Since I started walking the red road 22 months ago, I have understood my charge in this life as a warrior of love to nurture spaces where we can be well mentally, physically, emotionally, and spiritually. My hopes for our future with this proclamation is that more resources are made by us for us, that we are acknowledged in gendered spaces as holding both energies and not asked to choose between them, and that allyship goes beyond proclaiming a day for us and becomes active allyship, which I have already seen with organizations like Queer Humboldt, Two Feathers, and Outer Space Arcata. I am deeply honored to share in this space and hope that people know that there are many of us, but still fear for their safety here in this county. So please do your part as an ally in helping us carve out spaces where we can build a better future together. Ahoma takioasen, all my relations.
Hot watlow, Fritnuk Marnie Atkins, Yil Wiat, Jaro Gigi Daradali. My name is Marnie Atkins. I'm a Wiat person, and I'm from what is now known as Eureka. Jaro Gigi actually means "a place to rest," doesn't mean Eureka. I wanted to commend you all. I'm also a tribal leader. I hold the secretary position on tribal council, and so I want to, as leaders of communities, to thank you all for approving and maybe mulling over this proclamation in a time where it might not be to your benefit politically or as a leader. But that's what being a leader is, is you have to make decisions for everyone in your community, and you have to be sure that everyone in your community has the ability to be protected and safe and acknowledged and loved. It doesn't matter who you are. Everybody deserves the chance to grow up from a little person to a big person as safe as they possibly can be. And so really quickly, I'm going to tell you my story. I grew up half my life in a very rural area, a very conservative area, and it wasn't that I didn't, it wasn't that I was biased or prejudiced against gay or transgender people, it's just that I wasn't ever, I never saw them, right? They never appeared because it wasn't safe to do so. And then fast forward to the 90s, when that young man out in Wyoming was in a bar one night looking for companionship and happened to hit on the wrong person, and he was beaten severely and drugged behind a vehicle and hung up on barbed wire. And I remember watching the news report, holding my young son in my arms, and it was at that moment that I realized, my son will never have to worry about who he is. I will love him no matter what, and I will protect him no matter what. Because who you love and who you are and who you embody should not determine your safety in this world. So I just want to again commend you and the community for doing the strong stance and taking a step to make space for people of Two-Spirit, transgender, queer people, and keeping them safe. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next proclamation is in recognition of Girl Scout Week, March 10th through 16th, 2024, and Councilmember Schaefer will read that.
In recognition of Girl Scout Week, March 10th through 16th, 2024. Whereas March 12th, 2024 marks the 112th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA founded by Juliette Gordon Lowe of Savannah, Georgia in 1912. And whereas throughout its long and distinguished history, Girl scouting has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of courage, confidence, and character, helping girls gain leadership and learn the lifelong lesson of contributing to their communities. And whereas Girl scouting increases girls' awareness of opportunities available to them today in math, science, sports, technology, government, and other fields that can expand their horizons. And whereas this year, more than 2.4 million Girl Scouts nationwide, of which 25,000 of these Girl Scouts of Northern California and 300 in Humboldt County celebrate 112 years of this American tradition. They look to the 50 million women who are former Girl Scouts as living proof of the impact of this amazing movement. Seventy-six percent of female senators in the US Congress, 58% of female House of Representatives, and all three former female Secretaries of State, nearly all female astronauts, and numerous successful businesswomen such as Sheryl Sandberg and Melinda Gates have all been Girl Scouts. Five of the nine most recent female governors are Girl Scout alumni. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Arcata hereby recognizes the week of March 10th through 16th, 2024 as Girl Scout Week and applaud Girl scouting's commitment to developing the leadership skills of America's girls, dated March 20th, 2024, and signed by Mayor Meredith Matthews. And I'm proud to present this to Karuna and Isabella if you guys want to come up and say a few words.
We just want to thank the city of Arcata for acknowledging Girl Scouts in Humboldt County, and we try to do as much as we can to be a positive influence on the community and make a positive contribution, and we plan to continue so along with the rest of the Girl Scouts and the Girl Guides all over the world. So thank you so much, the city of Arcata.
Our next proclamation is in recognition of America Red Cross Month, March 2024, and this proclamation will be read by Councilmember White.
So whereas during American Red Cross Month in March, we recognize the compassion of people in Arcata and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crises and whereas this generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our community and advances humanitarian legacy of the American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, one of the most honored women in our country's history, who nobly dedicated herself to alleviating suffering. And whereas kind-hearted individuals in our community exemplify Barton's commitment as they step through the Red Cross in the California Gold Country region to provide a beacon of hope for our neighbors in need. And whereas through their voluntary and selfless contributions, they make a life-saving difference in people's darkest hours, whether it's delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting military families, veterans, and caregivers through the unique challenges of service, saving lives with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crisis. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Arcata hereby recognizes March 2024 as American Red Cross Month, and in honor of those that have led with their hearts to serve people in need, we ask everyone to join in this commitment to strengthen our community support of the Red Cross. And the recipient today is Randy Robertson. Please come forward.
So thank you to the city of Arcata and the council for the recognition. So the Red Cross, just a little bit about us, and the proclamation did great, because I don't have anything left to say, so that was really well done. So I'm a volunteer with the Red Cross. My primary job with the Red Cross is workforce engagement, which is engaging with all of our volunteers. Over 90% of our workforce in the United States, there's about 245,000 workforce people, but 90% of them are like me, volunteers. In Humboldt County right now, we've got about 67, well, in our three-county-region-or-territory, Humboldt, Del Norte, and Trinity Counties, we've got about 67 volunteers, one paid employee, and our Red Cross office is located up in McKinleyville. Feel free to come see us, come visit us, and most importantly, something I will leave behind is opportunity to volunteer with the Red Cross. So if you haven't thought about it, here's great opportunities to volunteer with the Red Cross. In the last, let's see, kind of the data that we've got right now, in the last 18 months, we have a team called the Disaster Action Team. They're the ones who respond when there's fires, when somebody in our community or family is having a very bad day, Disaster Action Team responds. There's been in the last 18 months about 125 of those responses. So when there's a fire, a flood, a landslide, tsunami, earthquake, whatever it is that happens, it's your friends and neighbors, the volunteers who are out there at 2 o'clock in the morning, or 6:00 in the morning, or 10:00 at night, who are responding to those sorts of events. Other thing we also do is we do preparedness and education events throughout the community. We also do a Sound the Alarm event, and then also in the last 18 months, we've installed for free with volunteer help, the number is right now 225 smoke alarms in the last 18 months have been installed. So we show up, we knock on doors, and ask people if they'd like a smoke alarm, and people go in and they install smoke alarms. So those are the kinds of things we do. We respond when the community needs us with a mostly all volunteer workforce, and we're really here 24/7 to answer the call when the Office of Emergency Services calls, the Fire Department calls. We're the ones who show up to make sure those people who are affected, if they've lost their house, we're going to provide the opportunity for them to have housing, food, clothing, whatever it is, the Red Cross is there. So with that, I want to thank you for recognition of who we are and what we do. And again, if you want to come volunteer, so I'll leave you some information about volunteering with the Red Cross, then also some information for the city council. So with that, thank you all very much, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thank you so much. Now is early oral communication. The city council values your comments. This 15-minute time period allows people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action will be set for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers are limited to two minutes, and there will also be time at the end for the public to comment specifically on each agenda item and again at the end of the meeting under item number 12. So again, this is for items that are not on the agenda. Again, we're taking in-person first, then going to Zoom, so please go ahead and line up.
Hello, the council and staff. My name is James Becker. I wish to speak tonight on policy CM 5E 7, the circulation mobility element in relation to L Street Rails and Trails Corridor. My recommendation to city council is to exclude the L Street Rails and Trails Corridor, Class 1 Trail, from policy CM 5E 7, in honor of the promise of city council to abandon the Canale Cuplet and to designate L Street Rails and Trails Corridor from Alliance Road to Samoa Boulevard as a linear park. The language of CM 5E was lifted from GA policy GA 7I and states as followed. CM 5E, in general, retain total current linear feet of a Class 1 Trail within the city even if current facilities must be realigned or relocated to other routes. In limited circumstances, the city shall retain the discretion to allow an applicant to demonstrate removal of a Class 1 Trail section would improve active transportation and access connectivity, and then to collaborate with the great Redwood Trail Agency and landlords and other agencies to retain and expand Class 1 Trails and Class 4 Bike Ways. Prior to the council's action August 22nd, many community members voiced concern that the L Street path would be moved and were reassured not to worry. The L Street pathway is a primary active transportation connectivity route through the corridor between Samoa Boulevard to Samoa Boulevard Highway 255. There's no need to reinvent that wheel. At the March 12th Planning Commission meeting, Community Development Director Lloyd justified policy CM 5E 7 by stating that it will preserve linear feet of a Class 1 Trail. He also confirmed that CA 5E 7 allows for an applicant to request to remove the L Street Rails and Trails path from its present location. And this policy specifically targets the L Street Rails and Trails Corridor. I'm second on time. I've seriously run out of time here. I just, in general, I'd just say, please consider the fact that this policy will allow for the L Street Trail to be moved, and I would ask you to basically re-figure this one because it wasn't the idea originally intentioned.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Joanne McCarry, and I'm always here or here as often as I can be on all these many important topics. Appreciate the ceremonial matters today, because sometimes I'm a critic of them, but sometimes you learn a whole lot if you're present in the meeting to hear some of the beautiful wherlasses of what the ceremonial resolutions or proclamations are. I share with you, I was able to find at the thrift shop next door, next door to me, a frame, and it's very important for me to frame the ceasefire resolution that we had unanimously passed on March 6th, and I finally picked up last week the signed copy and immediately put it in the frame and shared it with many people who were interested in knowing about this resolution. And so I'm just most grateful, and it means a whole lot to me, like a lot of those proclamations mean to those people who received them. My second thing I want to talk about is I shared with you an email, and I thank Mayor Matthews for acknowledging the receipt of my email. I hope you all noticed that I sent you one on Tuesday. I spent some time in the plaza, and I have been in the past few weeks trying to encourage and find out how the Plaza Improvement Task Force could be, the report could be revisited. I really do think we have this opportunity, as spring has sprung, to create a vibrant, a much more vibrant town center. And again, one of the things in the report was calling it the Arcata Peace Plaza. So that's the second thing about the Plaza Improvement Task Force. I would love for that to be resurfaced. And then finally, I'll talk later about the Redwood Peace and Justice Center.
Thank you, Joanne.
Good evening, Gregory Daggett. I wanted to bring up that Monday was the deadline for the EIR, and I ran into a young couple this weekend, and they were like wanting to know a little bit of information about what was going on in the city. And I was surprised that on the homepage of the city, that there is no acknowledgement at all as far as up and incoming events, you know, as you seem to have some information from years ago and also from, you know, a calendar date back in October. So, you know, something this important, and, you know, I had actually to direct them to Arcata 1 because, you know, it's kind of hard to say where on the website they can find it, so a little disappointing in that. And I was one of the few people that actually participated in the scoping session with David well over a year ago, and there weren't very many of us that actually wrote in questions. And I went over the EIR, and one of the things that, you know, that I've been talking to you quite a bit about in the last two years is the noise ordinance and the fact that we don't seem to have any action in that. So, I mean, I was pretty shocked to find in the ER that the city stated, "The city of Arcata shall enforce its citywide noise ordinance." And this is totally false because, you know, I've been talking about it for two years, and I've also, this weekend when we had the, on Sunday when we had the water main break, the police were out there, asked them, "Has anything trickled down from you, from the city council, from our leaders, as far as the noise stopping people with these large mufflers?" Nope, nothing, nothing. I haven't heard anything about it. So I'm just like shocked for two years I've been talking about this and nothing's even been said to the police department, apparently. So I'll ask for a response at some point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for in-person public comment? All right, let's head to Zoom. There is no online early oral communications. All right, well then, let's move on to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. A is approve the minutes of the city council meeting of March 6th, 2024. B is bi-weekly reports on disbursements. C, adopt resolution number 234-38, a resolution of the city council of the city of Arcata amending the class and pay resolution, compensation, and benefits for hourly-rated, part-time, temporary, and seasonal personnel to reflect a new position of program coordinator. D is to reappoint Dennis Halligan, Ken Hoffman, and Jack Naylor to the Forest Management Committee for three-year terms ending March 31st, 2027. Reappoint Deborah Coles, Jolly Earl, and Sheldon Heath to the Parks and Recreation Committee for the three-year terms ending March 31st, 2027. And reappoint Bob Brown, Chris McAuliffe, and Stephen Railsback to the Wetlands and Creeks Committee for three-year terms ending March 31st, 2027. E is to reappoint Wendy Ring, Karina Johnson, and Genevieve Serna to the Transportation Safety Committee for three-year terms ending March 31st, 2027. And F is to approve an amendment to extend the agreement with Humboldt Waste Management Authority for receiving and processing green waste and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable to execute all applicable documents. Would any council member like to pull anything from the consent calendar?
I would like to pull dispersment. Let me see, it's not, yeah, dispersments.
Okay, anybody else? All right, go ahead, Councilmember Stillman.
I just want to have one item on there each time, each, once a month. One of my tenants is involved in the tenant rental program. So I have my names in there. So besides that, I would move for every, all the other items on the agenda except for B.
Would you, you just would like to abstain from B, is that correct, Councilmember Stillman?
Yeah, I'm going to abstain from B.
Oh, thank you, that makes sense. You can move for all of them, just abstain from B.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have...
I will second that movement.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Stillman and a second from Councilmember Schaefer to accept items A, C, D, E, and F. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And is there any public comment before I move on?
Well, you'll have to deal with number B.
I know.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion on item B?
I'll make a motion for item B. I will second.
All right, there's been a motion by Councilmember Akkensalazar and a second by Councilmember Schaefer. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay. All right, new business is to appoint two new members to the Planning Commission for terms expiring March 31, 2028. So earlier, we had interviews with four candidates, really, really talented and knowledgeable people. I was really impressed. So do you, we want to open this up for a public comment first, or do we want to?
Sure.
Okay, let's, if anybody wants to make public comment on this item, I'll have you go ahead and do that right now.
So we're addressing Planning Commission?
We had interviews to appoint four members to Planning Commission. So did you want to make public comment on that?
Yes. Okay, I've been watching this process for a little while here, and there's some concerns that I have from the standpoint, there's, times there seems to be this litmus test that, so one of the questions, I think, from the past was asked about what the candidate's position was, the number of stories for the gateway would be example. And I think the one person that said four stories was the one that was, didn't get on to the Planning Commission. And I would, I would address the one person that, one of those two candidates that was placed on the, on the committee was someone that pretty, had some pretty strong positions. And I would, I would say that there's been a lot, a bit of a conflict of interest from the standpoint that that person is a paid employee for some of the organizations and has been basically...
This is about the four people that we are appointing tonight?
Yes, but it is related to that from the standpoint that there needs to be some clarity from the standpoint of what crosses the line. It's a conflict of interest, and I definitely see that as a conflict of interest. And why no one in this whole time since he's been on, involved with this has not said anything, I'm just kind of belated that he's a paid employee and his talking points are almost exactly what is going on for the gateway for the general plan, and nothing is ever said. In fact, it was a point of order that I made during the Planning Commission's last meeting, and the chair said, "We don't want to go there," which is sort of a acknowledgement, it is a problem, but it's just not being addressed, and it's just being pushed under the table. So why aren't we holding our commissioners these higher standards? I'm not disputing the candidates. I don't know two of the candidates. I just know two of them that are previous on the commission, and I don't necessarily have any issues with those two candidates, but sort of the chair is part of the process that's overviewing the rest of the commission where things are being crossed, in my opinion, and they're not being addressed. Thanks.
Thanks, Gregory. All right. Anybody want to start?
Can I just address that comment, though? But the Planning Commission is a Brown Act body, and the FPPC decides if there's a conflict of interest, correct? Like, that's who decides?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, each individual person, you know, makes a decision on conflict. Often, the planning commissioners will recuse themselves from specific projects associated with, you know, businesses or properties that they, you know, either live within 500 feet from or have a financial conflict of interest. We reviewed the gateway in particular for potential conflicts of interest. Our pastor, the attorney at that time, did make the determination that this is an advisory body as it relates to all matters within the general plan update and with the gateway. All of those final decisions are going to rest with the council, and the conflicts therefore rest with the council. So we have had several planning commissioners throughout the period that we've been reviewing this general plan that could have certainly had perceived conflicts of interest, reviewed them, they determined they could make independent decisions, and because it was a recommending body only, they were certainly allowed to do so, and not, you know, wouldn't have been removed by the FPPC for that.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Karen.
And that really informs this. Yeah, these four candidates.
Well, I'll just, I'll jump in and say, we had four really great candidates, and they're all very qualified, and two of them are current planning commissioners who are very qualified, and two of them were, you know, two community members that really care and have a lot of background knowledge. But I really would like to say, you know, maybe in the way of shaking things up, I don't know, but I really was impressed by Melissa. I thought she was a really, really strong candidate due to both her planning experience working for the city of Eureka and then also her previous experience in community development. And I think that's really important when working on the Planning Commission, to kind of look at both sides of like how engagement is happening and how, you know, that community outreach is happening, but also she really seems to have the technical knowledge of, of planning and how Planning Commission meetings run. And I just was really impressed by, by that particular individual. So I just wanted to put that out there for, for discussion.
I agree. So...
Yeah, I concur. I was really impressed with the caliber of the applicants. I personally want to champion for reappointment of Dr. Judith Mayer. She's not afraid to ask some of those hard questions, or to disagree, or bringing different points of view. So I feel like it would be in the best interest of Arcata. I also want to say that only two members have the institutional knowledge and currently have been on the Planning Commission for more than four years. That's Commissioner Tagney and Commissioner Mayer. Without Commissioner Mayer, who holds both an bachelors and a PhD degree in planning and has practiced at local, state, and federal levels, as well as teaching in planning, environmental regulation, community development, and sustainable design at Cal Poly Humboldt, Virginia Tech, and UC Berkeley. And I've also personally had an opportunity to take local government planning from Dr. Judith Mayer. Without the commissioner, without Commissioner Mayer, other than Commissioner Tagney, there will be no institutional memory or knowledge, and it's going to be very limiting with no one else having been on that commission for more than four years. I'm also very impressed with her resume, and it has reminded me of the depth and breadth of her knowledge. So as I said again, I'm championing for Judith. I've also had the opportunity to serve with her on the Planning Commission. I appreciate what she brings to the discussion. She does her homework, and she brings critical analysis. And again, she's not afraid to ask those hard questions. She not only brings the institutional memory, but experience and expertise, and for that reason, I'm going to make a motion to reappoint Dr. Judith Mayer for one of the two vacancies on the Planning Commission for terms ending, expiring March 31, 2028.
And I feel that Scott Davies, who's our, has been our chair, and I assume if we reappoint him, we'll continue, has done an excellent job, and he's really held the Planning Commission together, and he's somebody I would definitely support.
Okay, so we have a motion for Councilmember, for Planning Commissioner Mayer. Do we have a second?
I would like to say that I really appreciate what Judith has brought to the Planning Commission for so many years. But when we're talking about institutional knowledge, at some point, you know, other people are going to have to start building that institutional knowledge, and we need fresh ideas. We need, we need people with different perspectives. And I was really impressed with Melissa as well, and I think maybe it's time to have a little bit of changing of the guard.
I would like to, also to thank Judith Mayer for her service for the many years and all of the hard work and hours that she has put in for our community. So thank you for that, Judith. And I would like to make a motion to appoint Scott Davies and Melissa Smith.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Akkensalazar and a second by Councilmember Stillman. Is there any more discussion?
Well, I agree. I, you know, I've watched many Planning Commissions with Judith, and I think she's done, served us well. And I agree, it's time for us to move on, which people may feel that way about me, too.
All right. All in favor of appointing Scott Davies and Melissa Smith to Planning Commission's terms ending March 31, 2028. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. And then just to clarify, too, because one is, well, I guess it's going to kind of default. One is resident and one is live or work in planning area, which I know Scott already holds that live and work in planning area seat, but aye.
All right.
Did you catch that's four ayes and one nay?
Okay. Right. Item B is authorize a grant application to the Home Investment Partnerships Program for the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program. Can we have a staff report from Community Development Director David Loyah?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. All, we're going to tag team on this one. I'm going to start off with just a couple of comments, and then Jen is going to take us into a little bit more detail about the grant application process. So I just wanted to start by saying that the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program is a very challenging program. And this is not just challenging for the city of Arcata, it's challenging statewide. There are, you know, it's administratively intensive. There's a lot of detail that you have to keep track of to run the program. It's highly technical. There's a lot of expertise that needs to be developed among the staff operating it. And perhaps most importantly, it requires the landlords who are taking the tenants, who have the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance, to agree. It's not just a one-way agreement. We don't just give a subsidy to an individual and then they get money. And so there are a lot of complicating factors around the program that make it really difficult to operate. The good news is that your staff do an excellent job of running this program. In fact, we somewhat reluctantly, because of the challenges running the program, made a recommendation several years back to, to attempt to run a TBRA program again because of some of the, the need in the community. We had unsuccessfully run a TBRA program about a decade ago. And so coming out of that experience, we tried to forewarn the council that, you know, this is a difficult program, and it's, it's not guaranteed success. But because we do such an excellent job of running this program, in the last, we've, we've now run two consecutively, and in the last grant application, our home reps that work for Housing Community Development or HCD asked us to apply for a million dollars instead of the $500,000 that we originally are planning to apply for. They're constantly impressed by how well we do at operating this program, especially for the size of our jurisdiction. Many other jurisdictions don't even apply for these funds, and so they're under, you know, underfunded or under, applied. I'm not catching the right word there. But the, you know, the important thing here is that the, you know, the, the home program staff have a lot of faith in our ability to operate these programs. This is also, it's, you know, it's a huge program for the community as well. It has a huge impact on the recipients. Currently, we have about 60 households in Arcata that are receiving these funds. And basically, the way that it works is that the TBRA program pays for the difference between 30% of that household's income and the rent. And so it's, it's a huge boon because many of the folks that are on this program are very low income. Many of them are receiving, you know, Social Security. They're earning about $1,000 a month, and their rents are, you know, anywhere between $500 to $700 a month. So you can imagine trying to meet all the rest of your needs on $300 a month. Many of the residents are older Arcatans, and so have less means to just decide to take on another job or increase their, their income in some other way. When we have several families, and several of these folks were either formerly homeless or in situations now where without this rent subsidy that they would be homeless. And so it's, it's a really important program for those families that, that are receiving it. I know that you've received some public input, you've received emails from folks, and maybe some written letters from folks that are expressing their gratitude for the program and, and what it means to those families. So we're, we're recommending that you authorize approving a new grant. I do want to just point out, you know, these sort of structural programmatic problems that the home program has with this Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program. One is that the, the administration dollars that come with it are not enough to run the program. Typically, we're allowed to take 2.5% of the grant to operate the program, which is great. That means more of the grant dollars are going into rental assistance. But it also means that we are constantly trying to find ways to subsidize the program. And so it's, it's important for the council to understand that oftentimes this does mean a subsidy. This time, because of some circumstances in the home program, there's a possibility that we'll have additional admin, and I believe Jen is going to cover that. But it's something that we have, as, you know, we're trying to leverage the performance that we've had here at the city of Arcata to really influence the home program to reconsider this. 2.5% is not a limit that's set by some outside external factor. It's a limit that the home program has set. And we told them just the other day that if you make just a few changes in the way that you operate your program, we'll not only continue to do a stellar job in Arcata operating it, but we'll go out and sing your praises and try and convince other people to operate these programs as well. The other thing that I want you to be aware of is that, and this is, this is sort of a more significant impact because it affects the, the tenants themselves, is that the way that the programs operate, because they're on periodic grants, if there's a gap, a time gap between when we have an applicant or a grant that we're already operating, and when the home program is able to implement a new grant that they've awarded us, then everyone who's on the program basically falls off the program. They get kicked out of the program. And so all these folks that are, you know, very low income, the situations that I just described to you, go from having a rent subsidy to having no rent subsidy and having no certainty as to when that rent subsidy will, will come forward again. And so that's a significant structural problem that we've really worked with our home reps to try and remedy. A couple of things that we've talked about in this current grant cycle is the potential impossibility of either operating the grant using program income, although we think that we won't have very much program income to, to operate, so that's not going to buy us much time if there's a gap. Another is to extend the current grant that we have. We applied for a million dollars last time, and we think that we will have spent about $600,000 by the time our grant lapses. And the primary reason why we weren't able to spend the full $1 million is because of the gap from the last grant. Everyone had to go off the program, and then we had to spend time re-enrolling all of those people back on the program instead of enrolling new people onto the program, which means that we weren't able to spend the entire grant. And so when we were talking with our, our reps the other day about this, we proposed the idea of extending the grant period that we're currently operating under if there's going to be a time lag between these grants if we're successful, which we think we will be. Again, these are undersubscribed and were highly competitive. And so they seemed open to that on sort of a one-time basis. And so we'll continue to work with the home program to try and improve these structural program, problems. But there really just are no guarantees at this point, you know, based on what we know. We have a couple of, you know, contingency plans that we're trying to bring forward. And then lastly, just today, because of this gap and the way that it'll affect our, our residents, we, we had the opportunity to meet with the county and talk about an option for Tenant Eviction Prevention Program that they operate. And so we're going to start trying to spool this up now so that in October, when the TBRA program funds are, at this point, identified to end, that if we get into one of these gap situations for the most vulnerable, that we'll have something to bring into their, to that place, to replace those funds. that we'll have something to bring into that place, to replace those funds. So that's sort of the high level. I just wanted to give you background on that. And then Jen, if you'll take us through the recommendation.
Sure. So we are recommending that you authorize us to apply for 1.5 million this time, which is what we're eligible for. That really, it sounds like a lot, but it actually gives us only the ability to add about 15 more recipients to our program over the course of the full three years. We would have three years with this one, instead of about two and a half years, which we had with our previous grant, due to their delays and things that were happening there, assuming there isn't a gap. If there is a gap, I think we will have a harder time expending that full 1.5 million. So I am going off the, or our staff is going off the assumption that we will not have that gap. If we do have the gap, it would take us much more time to re-enroll that many residents over that period of time, and they wouldn't have the full three years' worth of assistance. So we're hoping that there is not that gap. HCD does seem to be, our representatives from HCD does seem to be really amenable to working with us, so that there isn't the gap. They're understanding what happened last time, where it took them 14 months to get us a standard agreement was just an unacceptable length of time for that, between award and actually getting the standard agreement where we were able to use the funds. The additional admin, I did want to talk about that a little bit. If we are eligible to apply for 10%, I do believe we should apply for the full 10%. That would fully fund the admin that we need for the full three years of the program. It is not guaranteed. So there is the chance that we will only get the 2.5%, which is guaranteed. But like David said, this is an undersubscribed program, and so there is a likelihood that we would receive the full admin amount if we apply for it, which I think we should do. I'm thinking if there's anything else, I think that's about it, unless you have other questions.
So I just wanted to ask you, so when the people, when you had to re-enroll everyone, that meant there were many opportunities that those people would lose their housing, because it would take a period of time to do this? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, well, I would think that the home program would want to really look at that and not have that happen, and be able to sustain those individuals that are already using the program and add additional people, instead of just taking them off and hoping within seven to 14 months you could get them back on, if I understand this correctly.
No, you understand it correctly, absolutely. I think one of the things that we've expressed that to our representatives with home programs, so they're very aware that this is a huge issue with running these types of programs, which is why a lot of communities probably do not elect to do this. We've also been working with the county's staff to enroll as many of our Tenant-Based Rental Assistance applicants in Section 8 in the voucher program, which is a long-term program, which is a much better program for them for the course of their life, if that's what they need. They have the ability to remain in that program where it's not dependent upon the grant funds that we have right now.
Yeah, Section 8, you don't, you are not taken off and on.
Exactly.
Once you're on, you're on.
Yeah. As long as you're income-eligible, of course.
Yes. Income-eligible, definitely. And I know we received a letter, and there's some concern about one of the mobile home parks, that there were a lot of seniors there, and with the increases in rents, that they're going to probably end up being homeless. And we don't want that to happen. We want to keep as many of our seniors in the best conditions possible. So thank you for continuing with this program.
Yeah, I, to what she's saying is, we have 59 seniors, and with that, 31 are from Lazy J, which is the Senior Mobile Home Park, and then five are veterans. And what gives me angst is that gap. And you mentioned that you had a couple contingency plans. The one contingency you mentioned, I believe, was the Tenant Eviction Program. And what was the other one?
The Tenant Eviction Program is a backup that we're planning for, for if there's a gap in the funding. The contingencies that I was referring to have to do with the grant amount that we're applying for, the 1.5 million that we're applying for. We want to make sure that we're still eligible in the next round to apply again. And so we have to, in order to be eligible, we have to expend at least 50% of our grant amount. If we apply for too much, and there's a gap, and we spend our time re-enrolling people, as opposed to enrolling new people, we won't hit that 50% threshold. And so if we get into that situation, then we would likely want to apply for less. And so that's why we're asking for you to authorize us to apply for up to 1.5 million. And then if we need to, if those contingencies come to fruition, then we would apply for less, so that we can ensure we're continuing the program.
So if it turns out that there's going to be a gap, we can ask for an extension? Because at this point, we've only gonna be using up $600,000 of the $1 million? Is that how that works?
Yes. I think your question was, what are our current possibilities to fill a gap, if there is one?
That is, exactly.
And I think that Director Loyah spoke to three. The first one was if we had program income within our own, you know, city program income fund, which we think we will not likely have much. CDBG continues to force us to draw that down first. That's a whole nother conversation. But we might have a little to get us through a month or two, but probably not long-term. Two is we will have unspent monies from this current grant contract period. So they've been in conversations to request, could we formally request an extension that would cover that gap period utilizing the funds we were unable to expend? We will certainly ask that, but we don't know if that's gonna be guaranteed. And then third is, is that things would move really quickly. They would get us our grant in time. Oh, and actually, the third contingency, though, is the eviction protection funds that come through the county. Probably not all of our tenants would be eligible for that, but likely some of the most vulnerable would be.
So, I'm just trying to think of backup for the backup, right? I know we're gonna have $45,000, which isn't a lot of money, but it could possibly help those that are on Social Security that would basically be unhoused if this gap happens and they fall between the cracks. And that's from our, we head for our community monies. Is that something that we could possibly consider as a backup?
Those are discretionary funds. Those are funds that technically need to be expended by June 30th. And we know that our current grant goes through October. You will be, you know, likely rebudgeting or budgeting new contingency funds for the council. That is a line item we're expected to put into your budget next year. So I think that certainly could be a conversation that you have during your goal-setting and budget process. And by, you know, let's say, early June, when we're having that budget discussion, we might have a little bit more insight as to where we stand with some of these other contingencies.
I mean, it would be a good problem to have if it turns out that everything goes smoothly. But during our goal-setting, we could set that as, look at that as a possibility if things don't go as well as we would like, so nobody falls between the cracks.
That is certainly council discretion.
Thank you.
I would just like to say that, I mean, some of the letters and emails we got, I can't even imagine. And especially with, oh my God, utility rates now being what they are. What a scary time to be, like, unable to afford things. So I really appreciate the way that the Community Development Team constantly looks for ways to help our community. And with that, let's open it up for public comment.
Hello, my name's Linda Dirksen. I live at the Lazy J Mobile Home Park. I'd like to ask you to please vote yes for applying for the 2024 Home Grant for the Tenant-Based Rental Assistant Program, the TBRA Program. There are about 31 seniors at our mobile home park who currently receive rental assistance from the TBRA Program. Many of these folks are my friends. I can see their daily efforts to pay their bills. I can see how important the TBRA Program is to their ability to survive financially. The staff report for this agenda item says that there are currently 59 Arcata residents receiving rental assistance from the Home Grant and the TBRA Program. They do not have to sleep on someone's couch, or in a car, or in a homeless camp. The Home Grant allows them to take care of themselves with dignity and peace. Please vote yes on applying for this important Home Grant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Lindsay. I wrote a letter to you guys, and to you as well, and I got, thanks for your responses to my letter. I don't want to reiterate, because I feel like I like to write in cursive and get my thoughts on paper. But I just was here tonight to support you reapplying for the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program. I've been homeless in Arcata twice with my daughter, and I could have been homeless, like, this time last year when I was in an accident, and my daughter was in an accident the same week as me. It was a horrible time, and it really was there for us when we needed it. And I can't imagine what it would have been like to have gone through the things that we were going through and have to figure out what to do for housing at the same time. So I hope that you will consider reapplying. And it seems like these people have really put a lot of energy and effort into making sure that our city does the right thing. So hopefully you guys will vote whatever they say.
Thank you, and I hope you and your daughter are both healing well.
Yeah, thank you.
Hello, my name's Joanne McGary, and I am yet to be a participant in this Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program. But a few months ago, I had maybe a premonition or something, and Jen Dart was very helpful in giving me information about what I could look for in terms of rental subsidies. And at the time, I didn't need it, because I was very ensconced in where I was living. And I just found out earlier this month that I have to move out by the end of May. And Isaac has actually been very helpful recently in giving me information about the Rental Assistance Program. And it just really makes me realize that, you know, there are people who want to live or live simple lives and have simple incomes, and simply just want to live in a safe and sane and affordable place. Those are three really important things. And so a rental assistance will help you get that safe and sane, perhaps, when you can't necessarily afford exactly what they're asking for. So I really think that tenants in the City of Arcata need better protections. And I really appreciate what this program can at least offer financially for those of us facing being unhoused, because we can't afford what's available. So please proceed as you can for the vulnerable ones in our community. And that's me, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more in-person public comments? Do we have anybody on Zoom? We do. Have one public comment on Zoom. Call-in user, go ahead. Go ahead, call-in user. Go ahead. Can you go ahead and speak? You just muted again. Can you unmute? There you go. You should be good. We actually cannot hear you, but it does show you're unmuted. Now you're muted. We could hear you push the buttons. If you unmute again, let's try it one more time. Do you want to try to unmute one more time? There you go. We can't hear you. Okay? Nope, we cannot hear you. All right, well, we, you're right there. Is there maybe a second mute on your phone? When you unmute, because we can hear you push the buttons on your phone. Okay, well, we encourage you to email us, please. Oh, every time I talk.
I would assume they're in support of this, actually.
Yeah, they muted again. I don't know. Okay, well, let's, I'm sorry. Let's bring it back to the council for any additional discussion or entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. Can I just share one quick thing?
Sure.
I did want to do just a quick shout-out to the property owners and landlords that also assist tenants in this program. There are caps on the rent that the program can help participate in. And we have had several local landlords that have been willing to reduce rents for tenants that are eligible for the program, to keep them in their unit and to have the subsidy flow to that unit for that particular tenant. And that's been really heartwarming to see. So shout-out to all those landlords that also help participate in this program.
Thanks for acknowledging that, Karen. Quick question. Is there some, I mean, obviously, they've done this on their own, but is there anything that we might do to incentivize them further to do that? I mean, other than they're gonna get great, long-term tenants as we bring in more individual landlords beyond, like, the mobile parks, but individual residents, so that we can sign more people up?
You do have individual residents who do it, I mean landlords who do it that aren't only...
So, well, I appreciate this discussion, but let's stick to what the actual motion is, which is to approve this grant.
Yep. I would like to make a motion to City Council Adopt Resolution Number 234-39, authorizing a grant application to the Home Investment Partnership for $2.5 million for the Tenant-Based Rental Assistant Program. And do you need a motion to also apply for that 10% admin?
No, so I'll second the motion.
All right. We have a motion from Councilmember White and a second from Councilmember Stillman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the motion passes. And, of course, of course. All right. So we'll move on to a public hearing to approve the annual engineer's report and declare the city's intention to continue to levy and collect assessments of existing, wow, existing assessment districts to include Mad River Parkway Business Center, Landscape Maintenance Assessment District, Windsong Subdivision Landscape Maintenance Assessment District, and James Creek Meadow Landscape Maintenance Assessment District. Can we have a staff report from the city engineer?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and members of the public. The item in front of you is our annual public hearing and approval of engineer's report with resolution for our existing three-assessment district, where we provide maintenance services that includes irrigation, lighting, and park improvement. Currently, we have three assessment districts. I provided a detailed report for each district in the staff report, but I'll just give you a quick summary of each of the districts. One of our oldest assessment districts is Windsong Subdivision, which was established in 1995. And currently, there are 110 parcels. Each parcel pays $135 per year, and total assessment is $14,850 per year. In the last three years, we have spent more than $17,000 each year on maintenance, on staff time, bills, water, parks, and sidewalk improvements and anything. So the lease was $17,000 in fiscal year 2122. Last year, we spent $21,000, so which is more than the assessment value that we are spending on that district. Second one is James Creek Meadow Landscape Maintenance District, which was established in 2003. And assessment value there is $16,080. And per parcel assessment we collect is $268. And there are total 54 parcels. And again, we have spent more than $19,000 each year on maintenance, on staff time, and all the maintenance work. And the most recent one, our assessment district, is Mad River Parkway Business Park, which was established in 2013, has 10 parcels. And on that one, per parcel value varies, because that has a CPI. Other two assessment districts does not have a CPI. The value of assessment is based on the engineer's estimate that was prepared at the time of establishment of assessment districts. So with that, this is our annual public hearing. As a part of a budget process, we do that. So here I am, ask me questions on this one. If not, I would say, please take public comment. ask me questions on this one. If not, I would say please take public comments and approve resolutions. Thank you.
Thanks. This is something that we do every year. I'm going to start by opening up to public comment, and then we'll come back if we have any...
That's what I was going to say. It's an annual presentation.
Is anybody wishing to speak on this? Come on down.
It says, "This is our annual engineering report." I'm surprised you don't have like something bigger like the wastewater treatment plant to report on.
This is an annual thing that we do every year. It's based on four specific areas, assessment districts of the community.
Okay, so you were never going to hear a report on that?
That would be another agenda item. Thanks.
So with that, I would like, I would be interested in making a motion that the city... Let me see. The adopt the... Well, we have to recommend approve the additional annual engineer's report, declare this city's intention to continue to levy and collect assessments of existing assessment districts, and adopt the Mad River Parkway Business Center Landscape Maintenance Assessment District Resolution Number 234-32, the James Creek Meadow Landscape Maintenance Assessment District 223431, and the Windsong Landscape Maintenance Assessment District Resolution Number 234-30.
I will second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Stillman and a second from Councilmember Schaefer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, looks like Jen's up again. Public hearing on Community Development Block Grant Accomplishments and Closeout. Oh, I guess it's David. Can we have a staff report from Community Development, from Jen?
Thanks.
Good evening again. So the item before you is a required closeout hearing to report accomplishments and receive public comment on two CARES Act-funded CDBG, Community Development Block Grants, rather, that the city received for activities related to COVID recovery. Before I get into the staff report too much, Councilmember Atkins Elzar pointed out that the table is flip-flopped, so the amounts for funding in the table in the staff report actually are flip-flopped. So Arcade House Partnership received $572,910, and the COVID Safe Events Program was $170,880. So I apologize for that. I just wanted to point that out that those amounts were flip-flopped. Yeah. So the first grant assisted was the Playhouse Arts with funding for a circus tent, a stage, other equipment, sound equipment, things like that, as well as technicians and coordination staff, and funding for event permit fees for outdoor events. The goal of that program was to bring back outdoor events that had been largely canceled due to COVID, you know, due to COVID concerns, and to help artists and performers get back into what they do best, and also to help them bring back those events that were really a big part of their income. So, you know, a lot of them lost all of their income during that time, and their ability to perform what they love to do. And the community lost all the events that they really loved to go to. So some of the events that were held were the Juneteenth, or assisted were the Juneteenth Celebration, the Ferry Festival, Arcade Arts, the Ruta Baga Ball. There were several events held by Kuna. There was the Six Rivers Montessori Fall Festival. There were over 60 events that were approximately 60 events that were assisted using those funds. The second grant was funding for Arcade House Partnership, which was used for upgrades to their kitchen at their annex location, which is down by the ballpark. It was also used for staffing to keep the annex open and to assist our houseless residents with a wide variety of services that Arcade House Partnership offers. There were approximately 500 to 700 people assisted at the annex per month. It varied. Definitely, there was a larger proportion of people at the beginning during those COVID year, it seemed like many years. A lot of the assistance that's received there is repeat assistance by the same people. So that's one thing that Darlene did want me to mention, that, you know, many of the people that they assist, they repeatedly assist over different periods of months. So it's not necessarily a different group of people every single month. So just wanted to point that out. All of the CDBG, CV23, which is Community Development Block Grant, CARES Act funding was expended, so there is no disencumbering of any funds for this grant, and I'm happy to answer any questions, or we can take any public comment.
Just a point of clarification. Do you need, is there anything we're approving for this, or is this just information?
It's really just information and authorizing us to close out both of these grants. It's a required public hearing for closeout.
Awesome, thank you. All right, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to mention, I thought one of the most interesting was the Star Tent, and I hope that it gets used quite a bit because it's very, you know, just the whole way that it works. And I think that's probably the tent that you were actually mentioning. So it's great. So I don't know if anyone else has comments, but if not, you're going to open the public hearing.
Whoa. Does anybody else have any comments? All right, so we're having public comment on the public hearing on Community Development Block Grant Accomplishments and Closeout. So just public comment on this agenda item.
Hello, my name's Joanne McGary, and I've constantly been interested in how we use our resources. And when that circus tent arrived, it was really exciting, and it was utilized really, really well in the beginning. And now I understand that there's some difficulty in having it be functional as a circus tent for performances and events underneath it, under the big top, whatever, because of insurance or liabilities or location or whatever. And so I get really concerned about things just lying on a shelf and not getting used. So if someone can enlighten me about the future of that circus tent, that would be great. And, yeah, and then it would just be wonderful, maybe, to be able to have an open house at the annex to really see what it looks like inside, because I'm never allowed inside. It's a city building, but it's being rented to a nonprofit, and those of us who want to see where the money goes, see the new kitchen and all that, it would be nice if they had like an open house so that we can see where this block grant money goes.
Thank you.
Good evening again. Since you're closing this out, I think it would be appropriate to find out what was successful and maybe what needed to be worked on. This is like a very normal thing to do as far as how much money and how much money maybe per individual was spent. I mean, I think this was something that you addressed over a year ago when you had the paper on the wall, and Karen was bringing up different goals. And I think one of them, one of you pointed out that actually how much money it was per person and what were you getting for those services. So this is a topic that's very hot in California right now with a lot of progressives, because they've seen billions and billions of dollars that are being put out to, you know, good causes. It all sounds good, but there are some very smart people, maybe in Sacramento, that are looking at, you know, these a little bit closer and trying to find out which programs are really working so that the dollars are going a long way to serving people, not just for like a year, but a year or two. And they're auditing, I think, even Home Keys. I think the Home Key Project, that was a pet project of the governor, I think down in Los Angeles, there was a lot of fraud that was going on. So I'm talking about progressive people that are pretty upset that all of a sudden in the state of California, billions of dollars are, you know, been spent, and they're not seeing, you know, a big difference as far as what's happening on the streets. And so I'm just asking the common question here with all our programs, what is our setup here from the standpoint of seeing what really worked and what improvements we need to do, or maybe what didn't work and we need to put more money into a program that was very successful? I haven't ever heard that discussed here, and I'm just wondering, because it doesn't seem like we have people that have business degrees. I mean, I just got, I don't know that for a fact, but it's just, when it comes to these money things, we seem to just quickly approve things, and there's not really much accountability of like fall through just how successful was it? And that's pretty disappointing, because there's a lot of people that are going to be suffering because there's not going to be enough money. I mean, basically, the governor is going to be having a lot more initiatives, I think, on the next election, that we're talking about billions and billions of dollars. And the state right now is $39 billion deficit. So there's going to be some serious cuts, and we need to know where that money needs to go to help as many people as possible. Thanks.
Thank you. Any more public comment on this agenda item? Is there anybody on Zoom?
Nobody online.
All right.
Well, I would like to move the direct staff to submit the final reports and close out the package to the state, please.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Stillman and a second from Councilmember Schaefer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Now it's time for oral and written communication. The city appreciates public input. This time is provided for people to address the council or submit written communications on matters that are not on the agenda. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral and written communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action will be set by the council for future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council are limited to three minutes. And if you are in person and wanting to give public comment, please line up at the podium. Please raise your hand if you're on Zoom, or press star nine if you're on the phone. We're going to start with in-person and then go online.
Hi, my name is Lorenza Simmons. I work with the HCC, the Harambe Cultural Center. Yes, oh, the mic is there. Yes, can you hear me? Okay. My name is Lorenza Simmons. I am a youth coordinator with HC Black Music and Arts Association, and also a part of the Harambe Cultural Center, which just recently opened up in North Town, Arcata. So we came tonight as our, with our team to talk about the center and just what we're doing and to get the word out there to you all and to everyone watching, so.
Hello, I am the teen Lejana of HC Obama, and what I do with the organization is going connecting to the youth and trying to actually bring newer, the next generation up and showing them what they can do within our community. Yeah.
Hujambo, my name is, or as I like to say, Nina Itoa Valetta. My name is Valetta, and it's a blessing to be here with y'all today. I just want to say that I come here as a villager because we are part of a village, and part of that village is inside of this beautiful place called Arcata. Arcata does not have a actual space for youth, and that is a deficit, and also that is concern because most youth, after they leave here, they want to go and not come back to Arcata. Maybe they come back later in their 30s, 40s, or what have you, but nothing's really keeping them tied here. There's the Arcata Marsh. Y'all have this beautiful teen center, but that teen center wasn't accessed during COVID. So we came about in 2019 because we heard voices that were saying, "We are experiencing anxiety and depression. We are actually considering suicidal ideation and wanting to complete." And that really bothered us in such a way that me and Lorenza started in 2019 this nonprofit to actually support Black and Brown bodies. But last year, I had a vision, and that vision was to have Youth Leaders of Tomorrow. And so we actually employed during President's Week of last year, we employed our youth that we did a rights passage in 2020, which that was Kayann, that was Sadie, and Nyla Rain. And those three individuals ran the program with local village folks. And they were so impressive. That was actually at a local school here. We've been partnering with schools for some time. We have the heart and spirit to rise up and do what our ancestors have asked us to do. We stand on the shoulders of them, but we know we can't do this without the villagers. So we're here today because we want you to see our faces. We know we walk past you, but we want to let you know we're not going to walk past you. Tonight, we were actually with the village, and as part of us being present as soul catchers, we were hollow bone, and we listened to people who drew their names on the sidewalk, of people who they are grieving, and they are still split with identity. There is loss in this community. Our goal is to stand up and bring that back together with the City of Arcata, with the people in Arcata, and also our outsized people. So we just ask that you come into the space, come look at the space, come be a part of the village, bring your crafts, do whatever it is that you want to do. We're here because of you, and we couldn't be anywhere else without you. Asante sana.
Thank you so much. I had the opportunity to do your ribbon cutting, and it was an honor. Your place is beautiful. And please, all of you, come to our Young Professionals mixer. It's April 10th. Please follow up with me. We'd love to see you there, and thank you again.
Thank you very much, everyone.
I will just share with the council, since they're here, we have connected the group also with Equity Arcata, and I did see it looks like they'll have a little bit of operating funds that they, that the city and the university through Equity Arcata will be working to support the organization as well.
Okay, I'm going to talk about something I wasn't even planning on talking about tonight, but I think it's, the most important thing is to have diversity on our council, diversity on our planning commission. And I'm not talking about just diversity from the standpoint of our skin colors. I'm talking about having a different point of view. And what I'm seeing is kind of disturbing from the standpoint of planning commission, that it's just we're, we're going down this road where we're losing all our moderate folks that are open-minded and listening to everything, and sort of just jamming in people that have one point of view that kind of aligns with the majority on the council. And I just find that so incredibly just upsetting from the standpoint. I think Fred took off after your vote this evening, because I'll just give you an example. I don't always agree with David, but if David had a doctor's degree and, you know, he had a totally different opinion of mine, I would certainly want him, you know, on the council and respect his views. You know, that's what we need, not only here, but we need it in America. Unfortunately, in America, we're not seeing that. We're seeing people that tend to like get into office, and they stack the person that aligns their particular view, and they get them in the decision-maker, and we don't hear what the other side. And that's probably one of the most important things about our country, that the minority always has a chance to say something. Look at, look at the beginning of our country. Slavery was just like the normal thing. A few people would shout out, "This is unacceptable," but the majority said, "No, no, this is, what are you guys doing?" And it's like, on this council, it's like you're not interested in having a different opinion on somebody. You want somebody that just basically is pretty much in line with yours, and that's what I'm seeing. If, what you did this evening, let me tell you, if you were at someplace with a little bit higher standard, like the university, there would have been a lawsuit from the standpoint of what someone had educationally and experience, and they're not going to be on the commission. That was wholly unacceptable. You know, the rest, the rest of, I don't know what the, I don't know the new council.
Yeah, actually, this is an item that is on the agenda that you're discussing, so we can't really talk about it. And you weren't there for the interview process, so...
I'm not complaining about the person you got. I'm complaining about all the rest of them that don't have any experience at all. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Joanne McGary, and I want to bring this up again because I think it was mentioned that proclamations that we present through the city here need to be made available for a year to the citizenry and stuff. And so I might suggest something as simple as, you know, a simple frame. You've got a lot of wall space, and a lot of people come in to pay their water bills and this and that. And I really do think it's important for the people to know, beyond just trying to look in an agenda packet or whatever on a screen on a computer, but that they know what we're spending our time and energy and passion on, you know, in terms of these proclamations that we do. So I really do think we should do something significant in letting people know the proclamations that you're spending time on at the beginning of these meetings. I think Gregory has a really good point about diversity of voices and opinions and points of view, and so I just want to say I agree with what he had to say. I really appreciate supporting a lot of groups that have gathering spaces now, like this group that I actually went to yesterday or two days ago, and I invited them to come to this meeting, and I'm glad they did, because, you know, there's just the same old people coming. We need, you know, new faces and new peoples and new voices to speak up in the community. So that brings me to the Peace and Justice Center sign, and I really do think that our community and maybe... And I really do think that our community, and maybe somehow with Equity Arcata, we can create a place, a space, for people to come and talk about issues that are really of big concern to the community. So the Peace and Justice Center sign is here for us to have and find a place so that people in our community, without arguing online or standing here at the podium, but that we can talk about this organically and holistically and really have, you know, thorough conversations about really matters of import, like the ceasefire resolution was for so many of us in our community. It could have been handled so much differently if we'd had a place to talk about it, to talk about it. This is what Arcata needs to be. It needs to be a place of peace, of compassion, of nonviolence, and of collective gathering. So, you know, there's other things I could talk about, but I'm just going to leave it at that. Some really important things were mentioned today, and something to reflect on about who we are as community.
Thank you.
Okay, so Jeff Harris-Murrell-Town. The last time at the meeting of public comment, one of the most interesting things that was brought up was actually on the adjustment in the insurance rate based upon a change in the fire assessment risk. I'm going to come back to that in a minute. Now, in 1963, a meteorologist associated with MIT, he was looking at a mathematical model, looking at convection and variation of temperature horizontally and vertically. And it was found that the uncertainty in the initial conditions increased exponentially so that even though the model was deterministic, the system was ultimately unpredictable. Basically, it showed that you cannot predict the weather. Now, climate is more of a statistical system rather than a deterministic analytical system. So you can determine what the averages are likely to be. Now, one of the interesting things about these distributions, for example, the normal distribution, is if you increase the mean by a moderate amount, the extremes increase a great deal. For example, if the IQ is around 100, you have like one in 30-plus people over about 130, and then if you reach about 115, it's about one in six. So a small change in the mean has a much higher incidence of the extremes. So we're seeing more of these outlying effects. Now, I was at a site visit in Somerset, in El Dorado County, just a few days ago, and the fire risk there is substantial. And there's been a change in the fire risk in El Dorado County. It's now considered moderate, and a lot of people are losing their insurance, and they're having to go to a Cal Fire Fair Plan program. So then there's a question is, well, to what extent is this a global warming issue? To what extent is this a fire suppression issue? To what extent is people moving into the urban-rural interface issue? Now, in Florida, for various reasons, mostly due to development along the hurricane coast, the private insurers are pulling out, so people are now going to go more to state plants. So there is going, you're starting to see a signal, not only physically, but economically in terms of the global warming impact. And it's been suspected by a number of people, to me, that it would, the signal would come through the insurance industry. In fact, there's a, this investment service they look at is the Value Line, and they have a subset of investments that relate to the global warming phenomenon. So that's what I'm going to contribute at this point. Look at the signals coming through the insurance industry to see how the, the building valuation is changing. For example, I was told that some places like in El Dorado County, the housing value is actually lower because of the fire risk, the insurance is so high. So that's starting to become a factor. Just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Any more in-person public comment? Is there anyone on Zoom?
There is no online public comment right now.
All right. Thank you so much. And now we're going to move on to council and staff reports. Do you have anything, Karen?
There are no further staff reports tonight.
All right. Who here wants to start?
Well, I'll.
I'll start.
Okay. Well, I'll just, you know, insurance. He was mentioning insurance, and the council brought up insurance too, and they thought maybe they would like to have someone come and talk about insurance. So one of the things in California right now is many people that have paid their insurance bill with no problems for years, they've had nothing happen, the insurance companies have decided not to be funding anyone around where out here where we have any kind of wood, and they're looking for how you harden your property. Hardening means how you pull landscaping back, you get rid of your trees and so forth. And so I don't think it would be helpful if we had an insurance agent, well, they could come and tell us what's going on and how difficult it is to find insurance carriers and how they are dealing with looking at things differently. And the insurance policies that we currently had in the past are gone way up now. So I just thought I would address insurance that has changed radically, and it's because of all the climate change, all the fires that we've had throughout California. And if you live near Redwood Park, they're considered, you're right there in the middle of the forest where you could have a fire. And so all the people that live up in that area, they've lost their insurance and they've had to find other companies to insure them. It's also true with a lot of the commercial buildings in, in Arcata, they have lost their insurance and they've had to find new insurance companies. And it's been, I would say, for some of the insurance agents, it must be like tearing your hair out on a daily basis, and maybe that would be a field you'd want to quit with what's going on now because it's become so difficult. But I just wanted to bring that up because you've all talked about insurance and concerns, and we've been addressed on that. And it's a very difficult situation right now. Well, I was just going to say that HTA, I think, is going to be able to do the Earth Center, and we've made progress along those lines. And so I'm happy about that. And also on our agenda for HTA, coming up on the second, or it's actually the third of April, you know, I asked that we have the, that the HTA board really embrace the fact that we're going to have a cap or whatever we're going to call that, the connection between one side of Arcata and the other, and that they possibly look at what we can do about a, a kind of a center, similar to the Earth Center, with housing, that we put that into a goals and future thought process so that whenever it happens, we'll be there. So I know that Greg Pratt talked, who's the executive director, has talked to Nitro, and Nitro will be at our board meeting on Zoom or in-person to push that forward.
I went to the Civic Well Conference in Yosemite with Alex and Kimberly, and as well as three of our county supervisors and one of our Eureka City Council members. So there was good Humboldt County representation, and it was just wonderful, and it was just such a great opportunity to think about things and hear from experts and network and talk to folks. And I haven't parsed out all of my notes and ideas from that yet, but just, it's a good takeaway to just think about how much, you know, we have in common with, I don't know, Truckee and Costa Mesa and San Luis Obispo and all these other folks from different cities that I got to have a chance to sit and talk with and share ideas. And so maybe come, come goal setting, I'll have parsed some of these ideas out a little bit better. But just wanted to say that we went to that, and it was a great conference, and it was great to connect with folks and be part of it.
Yeah, so let's see, lots of things. I got to attend the Chamber Mixer at North Coast Growers Food Hub, and as Sarah mentioned, the Civic Well Conference was my, it was great. So I'm still in awe. Some of the things that they talked about were electrification, transportation, sustainable funding, you know, strategies for infrastructure, and, and my thing was just disaster preparedness. I also attended the homeless housing working group, and so I have a report for Arcade House Partnership. They gave us a program performance from four, 22 to 23, and basically just bed nights, 14,619 individuals served, 128 households serves, 92 current enrollment or 24. And so one of the things they call our exit designations, and so if they're able to get somebody into something more permanent or a shelter, so that's 18, and that's at 14%. They have been able to exit some folks to a temporary housing, and there were 12, 9%. And then permanent housing, 39 at 30%. And so that overall is 54%, which is really high. So that really speaks to success of the program. Currently, right now, at the Safe Parking Program, there are 24 folks being served since March 1st. What else? I had a really productive walk with our new chief of police and also Lieutenant Chris Ortega with three constituents out in Valley West. And, oh, the new lodge apartments are moving right along. I'm excited to see that new housing come into fruition. And Carlson Park update, let's see, the city continues to work with our general, the general contractor, Hooven. The concrete, concrete work is complete around the future playground area. They are pouring the foundation for the new restrooms this week, and the new restrooms will be installed next week. Of course, you won't be able to use them until the whole park is complete. The city is working with RCEA and PG&E on some electrical designs, the new EV chargers planned to the parking lot, which I got to be in a brand-new EV coming from the park into my next destination. So much of the sidewalk and curbing is complete along the roadway, and the playground installation should occur April through June. And so, yeah, we're on track to, you know, with that construction for a mid-to-late summer opening. So I'm real excited about that. That's all I've got.
So I attended a CalCog board meeting last week, and the two bigger takeaways from that, which I will also be reporting out tomorrow at the HCOG meeting, are just that CalCog is still working to generate opposition to the pullback of the $300 million in REIT funds. And the executive director of CalCog was the only non-state speaker who was actually invited to speak on the REIT funds. And then there is a bill, AB 2485, which is in regards to RENA, the RENA numbers and transparency. And I know some of us have been in groups that are wondering how those numbers actually get calculated, and I guess we're not the only ones wondering those things. So the Sacramento County of Governments is sponsoring that bill, and CalCog as a collective group voted to support it. So that's something to keep an eye on regarding RENA funds. And just a fun thing I got to do was the mayor invited me to participate in an interview with a local young journalist who had questions for us just about some of the services that we offer to unhoused people in Arcata, and we were able to do that at our new conference room, and it was really lovely. So thank you for the invitation.
Thank you. So I am, again, on the Policy Committee for the California Cities on the Housing Economic and Community Development. And so some of those policies that people were actually talking about tonight, as far as what money is being allocated for what in relation to, to housing and economic development in communities, I'm going to go and help decide which we should support. So that's really exciting. I'm going down to Burbank on Friday for that meeting. I would like to very, very much thank the team that worked probably 30, 48 hours to fix the burst pipe and the river and the big hole. And I know that they worked through the night and the dark, and that was tough. It was like against a gas line. So thank you so much to all the people that worked on that. I attended a Cal Poly liaison meeting and also a CIRC meeting today. They're both with almost the same people, so it's kind of like, I forget which we talked about and what. But one of the interesting things that we talked about was a report on the enrollment trends in the university and how, you know, we as a community sometimes play a part and influence, like what students decide to stay and leave, and how we can be better community leaders in welcoming and embracing these students. And it really, you know, made me thought how, you know, in both of my jobs, I can make Arcata more welcoming for these students. So that was, that was a really valuable meeting, so thanks, Stacy, for organizing that. And I know Gregory isn't here anymore, sorry, but maybe after the deluge that we had, it would be great to have a wastewater treatment plant update in the near future, so. And I think that's it for me. Oh, yeah. Oh, the trip that we took, did we talk about, do you want to talk about it? I talked enough.
Sure, that way I can compliment you. So we, so Councilmember Stillman and Mayor Matthews and myself got to journey to San Francisco for the day last week with a few members of Cal Poly, and also our city engineer, Nitro, was there. And it was, it was a really cool opportunity. Arcata has been chosen as one of three cities in California for a pilot program of reconnecting communities and trying to kind of make up for a lot of the damage that has been done to communities through transportation. And so nothing like this has been done in the country before, is what was said at the press conference. And so our mayor got to give a speech in line with a lot of other really impressive speakers and to thank the governor for that money to kind of push forward on exploring the idea of reconnecting our city. So it was a lot of, it was a fun trip, and again, puts Arcata in a position to lead the way in something that is very important.
And it was also fun to be able to tie it back and thank Vice Mayor Stillman for her visionariness that she's had 50 years ago. So again, it was really wonderful to have you be there and have you kind of reached that moment.
Well, it was exciting. I got to drive everyone in the fast lane, and I'm, you know, and Nitro said, I'm following you, and you're like going 80 miles an hour, and you've got all the council members with you. Woo! But, you know, they're right on you, so you can't really slow down, so.
Anyway.
We were able to make good.
With that, I'm going to, sure.
Let's talk about dates just quickly, sorry.
Let's take our dates, I take it back.
I would like to know our future meeting dates.
Yeah, let's nail some stuff down quickly.
Sorry, that's a page that I didn't turn over. Future meeting dates.
Okay, so based on your doodle poll results, we do have two dates at work for everybody. One of those is April 2nd, the other is April 16th. Those are going to be the Tuesdays before both of your April meetings, just as an FYI. My recommendation is that, is that we do hold the April 2nd for your goal setting, and we do hold the April 16th right now to at least do some general budget discussions. We certainly won't have all of our budget developed in numbers, but there are a lot of things that, that we could cover, especially including the next, well, on your April 3rd council meeting, we will be reviewing the results of the survey that FM3 did around potential tax measures. So I think by the 16th, we could be discussing in more detail if there's something that we want to try to address around revenue.
April 2nd.
So April 2nd for goal setting, whatever time you all as a council want. Five, five thirty.
Five thirty.
Five thirty, okay. So April 2nd, 5:30 for goals. April 16th, 5:30 for some general budget discussion, potentially completion of goals if you need that time. There weren't any dates, I would love to try to get a date that last week of May to really go through the budget before it comes to you for your first week meeting in June. If there's any dates that last week in May that would work for the council, we can re-doodle poll all of them.
So the 16th will be?
5:30.
Yes.
It'll be primarily budget.
Okay, budget, thank you.
And our goals.
Did we have a time that everybody agreed on for a study session?
We haven't. So my recommendation is that once we get through goals and budget, that we do schedule a meeting with the chairs, and we can really look at, this is our budget, these are our goals, and how can the committees best tie in and support the council in getting this all done?
That sounds great. Sounds great. Awesome. Thank you. And now, now, you're adjourned. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you so much.